Good morning, we're gonna stand this morning, we welcome you all to the town meeting. May 6th, 2023, we're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance this morning. Yesterday, May 5th, 2023, we elected a moderator, Hadi Buker, and he's going to come at this time.
Good morning, everyone, the town meeting, glad to see a great turnout today. A couple announcements before we actually open the meeting. First and foremost, the Couples Club again this year is sponsoring our scholarship fundraiser. That's what's happening over there to our left. A little bit later on, we're gonna be auctioning off all the contents. And just to give you a quick update of what's over there. Six cinnamon buns, three dozen yeast rolls, six apple pies, two chicken pork pies, a Kahlua cake, blueberry pie, cherry pie, mince meat pie, a Toll House pie, blueberry crumb top, two peanut butter pies, it's killing me, I can feel it attaching itself already. Apple cranberry crumb top and two loaves of French bread, and one of my favorites, the chocolate cream pie. So that's what you got to look forward to. We'll have an auctioneer coming in a little bit later on, and we'll auction off all that stuff for our fundraiser, which goes for a scholarship at Nicole's. So thank you for participating. Before we open the meeting, there are several announcements that need to be made, and we'll start off with our town manager, Chris Lowfield. Good morning, everybody, thank you for coming out, beautiful morning out this morning. Uh, we haven't presented this award that we're going to present here this morning for seven years. Uh, but this morning, uh, I would like to read this out. "Boston Post Kane, the town of Hatlen, Maine presents this certificate as a symbolic representation to Howlin' E. Emery, given to the oldest male citizen of Hatlen, originally presented in 1909 by Edwin A. Roser, editor and publisher of the Boston Post newspaper." I'm gonna ask the selectmen to come up. Howlin', would you come forward, please?
Do you have any words with them? That's fine.
Just so everybody understands, uh, the Boston Kane that we have this year has an emblem on it with Howlin's name on it, and you do not have to give that back. We're giving that to you to keep for now. Congratulations. Yeah, just, just. For the female citizen of Hatlen, we have Viola Sarge, and unfortunately, Viola couldn't be here this morning. Uh, the selectmen have agreed to go to the nursing home and present this at a later date. So Viola, uh, Viola Sarge is our female candidate. Uh, this certificate reads, "Certificate of recognition, the town of Hatlen, Maine presents this certificate to Harold Buker for achieving Maine's Spirit of America's esteemed 2023 nomination for volunteerism for efforts maintaining American flags on the streets of Hatlen since 2007." Hatlen has a potluck on crime on this. Uh, this one receives certificate of recognition, the town of Hatlen, Maine presents this certificate to Elmer Lowfield for achieving Maine's Spirit of America's esteemed 2023 nomination for volunteerism for efforts maintaining American flags on the streets of Hatlen since 2007. Thank you, Hadi. Our next presentation is quite an interesting situation. We have a little small community called Little Creek in Delaware. It's a community of 250 people. And with us today, we have Ken Fraser, who is the president of the fire organization there, Jason Arrington, who is the vice president, and Scott Bundick, who is the fire chief. The fire truck that is outside today, this morning, was donated by this organization. And, uh, they actually paid to have it transported here and all of that. So we're extremely grateful. Uh, we have a plaque for you folks, would like you to come up for a minute, and thank you for your generosity. These gentlemen traveled here from Delaware, and again, we thank you. Scott Bundick has a place in St. Albans, and Scott has made the connection to this, this area, and we thank you for that, Scott, and appreciate everything that you've done for us. Gonna move this list, 'cause that Toll House pie is looking at. Well, good morning again, and we'll just go ahead and get right into the business of the meeting. Uh, we're gonna start with Article 3, if you wanna follow along. I will read the article, and then you can tell me what you'd like to do with that, and then we'll discuss it. I will, uh, read Article 3, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of assessors to apply $200,000 of the undesignated fund balance to reduce the 2023 slash 2024 tax mill rate." So moved in second in Article 3, any discussion? Yes, so if you would, if you're gonna have a discussion, please stand, give your name, so that we can make sure everybody knows what's going on. You coming up? Sure, thank you, that's a great way to do it.
Well, my name is Mark Candor, I live at 510 Ford Corner Road. This $200,000 is an opportunity to make a long-term investment in our community. Nothing is more important for a community's future and success than the well-being of our children. A recent study found that Maine has the highest rate of child abuse and neglect in the United States. Somerset County has the highest rate in Maine. This is a problem that needs to be addressed, and this would be an excellent use of the response. The reason given for this abuse and neglect were domestic violence, substance abuse, and poverty. This needs to be a priority, not only because it's the right thing to do, but also because it is essential for a community's future. I urge you to vote no on this, so that money can be later allocated to address this issue. And I would volunteer to head up a committee to look into the best way to spend that money. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Yes? Hang on just a second, I'll get to the microphone. Thank you very much, Lisa. You don't have to.
I'm Lisa Sauer, I live on Great Lakes Drive, and my question is, how much funds are in the undesignated fund? What's the total? Just put me in the ballpark.
The undesignated fund, I would say right off the top of my head, uh, would be 2.2, 2.4 million for the undesignated side. Any other comments? Yeah, Chris would like to speak again.
Yeah, so I would just, although I agree with the fact that we should support the child abuse and things of that nature out there, just let me caution you, if we don't do this, there is a mill rate impact of approximately a million, uh, excuse me, would be about one, I didn't do the math though quickly, but maybe one and a half in the mill rate. So every hundred thousand, hundred and ten thousand is close to the equivalent of a mill rate. We're putting this on here to help bring the mill rate down, so just keep that in mind.
Other comments before we bring to a vote? Okay, Article 3 has been moved and seconded. Uh, I forgot to mention this to start with, but those of you with the orange cards, if you want to pass this article, raise your cards now, please. Thank you very much, those opposed, please raise your card. Thank you for doing that, Article 3 passes. Article 4, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to apply $10,000 of the undesignated fund balance to the fire department reserve account." Moved in second in Article 4, discussion, please. No discussion, all those in favor of Article 3. Put that down really quick, those opposed, it's a vote, thank you. Article number five, "To see if the town will vote to authorize municipal offices to accept and expand any of all funds or property from federal, state, or private, private funding in the form of grants or donations, public or anonymous, that the municipal offices deem appropriate and in the best interest of the town." Article 5, moved and seconded, discussing. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please, raise your cards. Opposed. Thank you, two opposed, please put that down. Article 5 passes. Article 6, "To see if the town will vote to authorize municipal offices on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for nonpaying taxes and or assume means thereof, except that the municipal offices shall use the special sale process required by Title 36 MRS 943-C for qualifying home state property if they choose to sell it to anyone other than the former owner, and on such terms as they deem advisable to execute quick claim deeds for such property." Article number 6, moved and seconded, your discussion. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, opposed. One opposed. Article 6 passes. Article 7, "To see if the town will vote to authorize municipal offices to dispose of equipment, vehicles, or furniture no longer necessary to town operations that the municipal offices deem appropriate and in the best interest of the town." Article 7, moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Thank you, opposed. We have one opposed. Article 7 passes. Article number 8, "To see if the town will vote to establish September 15th and March 1st due dates on taxes and set the interest rate at 7% that shall start accruing and being applied the day after these due dates." Article number 8, moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor then? Opposed. There's one opposed up there. Article number 8 to pass. Article number 9, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collected to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 506." Moved and seconded, Article 9, any discussion here? All those in favor? Opposed. Article number 9 passes. Article number 10, "To see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman to borrow money in anticipation of the ensuing year's taxes if necessary." Article number 10, moved and seconded, do we have any discussion here? All those in favor? Okay, opposed. Two opposed there. Thank you, Article 10 passes. Article 11, "To see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman to serve as assessors and overseers of the poor." Moved and seconded, Article 11, do we have any discussion? All those in favor, please? Opposed. Article number 11 passes. So, um, just a quick comment. You'll notice in the following articles, it's a little line underneath that says, "Selectmen and budget committee recommends whatever amount." And I just want you to know that when that says that, it means that the budget committee has looked at these articles, thoroughly gone through them, and have stated what you see there on the bottom. Just wanted to let you know that these are elected officials by you, trying to help us make those decisions for the town. Okay, under Article 12, I'm gonna read the amounts. "To see what sum the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for the following general governmental accounts: Pay to the offices, $9,000. Administration, $285,140. Town office, $12,800. Assessing, $14,000. Office equipment and technical, $25,000. Social security, $32,500. On the contingent, $9,000. And abatements, $4,000. The total for this article, $391,440, and the selectmen and the budget committee suggest the full amount." Moved and seconded, Article 12. Do we have any discussion here? Yes? John has a reason personally for not voting on this particular article, thank you, John, for doing that. Any other discussion? Seeing no hands, would you please raise your card if you agree? Thank you, those opposed? We have one, two opposed. Article number 12 passes. Can you hear me okay? Article 13, "To see what sum the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for the following public safety accounts: The request, Fire Department, $48,025 for streetlights, $15,000. For our dam, $1,750. The old hydrant rental, $112,600. For animal control, $7,000. And for insurance, $101,974. And the total is $286,349 for Article 13, and as you can see on the bottom, it is recommended." Moved and seconded, Article 13, your discussion. Oh, great, uh, let's start with you, come on up. Come on up and state your name and your address for everybody. Those of you that wanna speak, if you would just come right up here, wait or make it work for you.
Yeah, my name is Scott B., I, we're on 30th and 7th. See, it's like $7,000 for animal control, it's kinda high. Some thousand dollars for the money, bro. Some thousand dollars is because of money, bro, animal control. Know what you guys are saying, but I think it's kinda high.
What does the $7,000 cover?
Okay, hang it on, we'll have Chris come up.
Yeah, so the $7,000 actually covers, uh, uh, the location where we have to take food animals if we collect them. Uh, I don't remember off the top of my head what that figure is in total necessarily, but it's, it's a majority of the budget. I believe that animal control officer gets $0.600, and, uh, then there's mileage on top of that. So that, that $7,000 budget includes those items. Lisa?
So according to my quick math, it looks like the insurance cost has gone up from $83,000 last year to over $100,000 this year. Can someone speak to why that is?
We won't be taking any comments other than the microphone, thank you. You wanna respond to that?
Yeah, so this is the total amount of the insurance. So we had an increase on the insurance and just in a general liability as a whole of 5,000. Uh, the workers' comp increased 6,500. Uh, we actually were able to drop the unemployment. Uh, we were actually able to drop the health insurance from 60,050. And then there's an IPP, which is, uh, disability program for the employees, that went from $3,100 up to, uh, $4,224. So it's, it's the culmination of the changes of insurance.
Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Irene White, um, I'm wondering, is there a way to avoid such excessive hydrant rental every year?
I know this is a question every year, and the answer is primarily the same, but just to make sure it's clear again, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, the hydrant rental is based off infrastructure investment that the water company does. And, uh, they are able to change that actually from the end of the year based on their infrastructure costs. Now, they can take away the fire hydrant cost if Now, they can take away the fire hydrant cost, if they do that, it would get passed on to the water users. So, uh, the fee that they charge on the hydrants is a fee that they charge to try to balance the cost that goes to the customers that are using the water. So, as they increase infrastructure or improve infrastructure, they're entitled to collect some of that back, and hydrant rental is the way that they do that.
So it's been moved and seconded to article thirteen, we've had, uh, three discussions on that, any more discussion? Yes ma'am?
This is a question about the fire department. Um, I'm very grateful for their service and the new track, the Tapsite. The question that I have is, is that enough money for the fire department, do they have what they need? With the changing climate that we have, we will be exposed more and more in the future to wildfires and so on and so forth. So I wanna make sure that the fire department has the resources that they need, number one. And number two, I would like to suggest that perhaps if they don't already have some way of giving an award or supportive training, that they get people to go out to some program to get the training that they need for wildfire control.
So being on the Budget Committee last time, I, I will, uh, attempt to answer that for you. That amount, forty-eight thousand, was immediately brought up by all the members of the Budget Committee as well. And that question was asked, was that enough money? And we were assured that that was what they needed at that time. Yep, hang on.
So yeah, the, at this point in time, uh, we review the budget with the Fire Chief every year, and forty-eight thousand is what we came up with this year. As far as equipment, uh, we were able to get fifty thousand dollar grant that was utilized, was matched. Uh, so they are getting, uh, new, uh, outgear, they're getting new hand tools, things of that nature. Uh, it was a ninety-nine thousand dollar package, I believe ninety-eight thousand, uh, break net ballpark. And, uh, we were able to get a grant from USDA to fund fifty percent of that. So, uh, right at the moment, I think they're in pretty good shape, uh, they're not afraid to ask if they need more. And they also, uh, are very good at raising money if they need more, so, uh, thank you for the concern, but they seem to be okay at the moment.
So article thirteen had been moved and seconded and with discussion, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? One, two, three, four, five, I see. Article thirteen passes, thank you. I know if you're like me, you're waiting, when is he gonna stop and auction those pies? Article fourteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and or appropriate for the following health and welfare accounts. The request, general assistance, twelve thousand, Tri-Town Food Bank, two thousand, for a total of fourteen thousand, and as you can see, it is recommended. Moved and seconded, article fourteen, any discussion? All those in favor, article fourteen? Opposed? Article fourteen passes. Going to article fifteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and or appropriate for the following public works account. For labor, forty-one thousand, six hundred. For supplies and services, twenty-five hundred. For roads, three hundred and one thousand dollars. Snow removal, two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. For the town truck, five thousand dollars, and for cemeteries, thirty-six thousand, five hundred. And the total here for article fifteen is six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Moved and seconded, article fifteen, your discussion please? Yes, one up, Kathy.
Hello, Kathy Clifford, Halfway Point Lane, um, could someone just address the amount or what is actually roads, what is that for? Is it paving, ditching? Thank you.
We happen to have the office sitting right up front here, he knows where everything is happening, so Chris?
Yeah, so there's a road plan that was up on the back table, and it gives a rundown of what we've budgeted for each road this year and what we intend to do. Uh, keep in mind, it's a draft copy and it changes from year to year, but I'll go down through it in a minute. Uh, we've got a culvert project going on on Beans Corum, uh, we budgeted a hundred and sixty thousand for that. We've got a project going on one fifty-two with the state on the sidewalk, we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that. Uh, on Hubbard Avenue, we have budgeted for paving, for thirty thousand. Uh, Commercial Street to North Street, uh, we have budgeted a hundred and ten thousand. Um, and we also do have a, a million dollar project going on up through Commercial Street, uh, this summer, that's gonna be, uh, kicking off here in the next several weeks. Uh, that's a different part of money, it's a, it's a grant. Uh, we've got on here to do some ditching on some of the hills in town, Vicky Road, Helen's Way, uh, which is up off the Commodore Road. And, uh, I suspect we may have to do some up on Huff Hill as well. Uh, that's just a, a budgetary figure of twelve thousand. Uh, Helen's Way, I did eight thousand, miscellaneous ditching, twenty-three, five hundred. Uh, grading the roads, I budgeted eighty-five hundred this year. Cold patch, three thousand, uh, culverts, five thousand. Uh, miscellaneous on roads, just general upkeep, fifteen thousand, seven fifty. And we get a total category of five hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the budget, the budget figure that you see on this line item is less than the five hundred thousand, because I'm also asking for sixty-five thousand dollars for fund balance, that's in another article. And we also have a grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand to do some culvert work. So that gets us to the five hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Any other discussion on article fifteen? Yes ma'am?
Didn't say it last time, David Bernard, more open. I had a question about the recent flooding that we had in the roads. Uh, a lot of roads, a lot of roads are designed for, say, one-hundred-year flood. But as the climate is changing, the frequency with higher floods is gonna occur more often. So my question is really about twenty-three, which I don't see on here. What are the plans for twenty-three, because that's a major escape route, uh, parts of it that flooded this time. Uh, I suspect that will happen again more often. So I assume that there's some sort of planning going on for twenty-three upgrade in the future. I'm curious whether climate twenty-three might ever into a channel, how that fits in the budget.
You understand, Route twenty-three, Dave? Yeah, Route twenty-three is a state road, and I can't tell you what the plan is on it, to be, be honest. I really don't know what the, uh, thought process is with the, the, uh, state road, but, um, the, uh... I know that they've got some paving projects going on and so forth, but I don't know anything about the culvert, I would have to reach out to DOT to get more information.
Any more discussion on article fifteen? All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Thank you, article fifteen passes. Last article before we do some auctioning. Article sixteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the following health and sanitation accounts. The request is the transfer station, one hundred seventy-five thou- thousand dollars, three hundred, excuse me, one hundred seventy-five, three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five, I don't know why that was so difficult. Code enforcement, sixteen thousand, for a total of a hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and it is recommended. Comments? Thank you. It's moved and seconded, discussion please? All those in favor of article sixteen? Opposed? Article sixteen passes. Now for the good news. I have with me my good friend who's been an auctioneer for years and years and years. A close friend who also lives at the Couples Club, and it's his joy, believe me, to sell pies, cakes, whatever's over there. So, a round of applause for Mike Wires, please, let's get some food, sir.
In full disclosure, I am not an auctioneer, I've never been licensed as an auctioneer, I'm just a seller.
Alright, so I'm...
So are we, are we gonna sell them all?
Yep, sell them all.
When I started, it's at the table, people look, I'm here, I wanna say one thing. When you bid, okay, hold on, this is good, when you bid, remember what sugar, flour cost you in the, the grocery store. Because these aren't just cheap pies to make, pie costs something. But we'll start up here, now we'll start with pie. We, I've got four apple pies here, and I'm going to, uh, ask for raffles, um, and bids, and we'll, uh, know the raffle bid. So, who'll give me a bid, this apple pie, looks good, both are graded, how much?
Twenty-five bucks.
Twenty-five dollars, okay, twenty-five dollars, who'll give me thirty? Any more? So... Great, have your name?
Donna Greenwood.
Donna Greenwood.
Thank you. You want, I think what they want you to do is... You can get it later. So as you understand, I've got four other pies here, is anybody else wants five hundred for twenty-five dollars? Okay, then I'll, I'm gonna bid on this apple pie. Great bid. Certainly, I don't like these pies, so they're a waste.
No, I'm waiting for the one that immediately attaches itself, I already know which one I'm going for. How about twenty dollars for that pie, in fact, there are three more, four more, no, five more, five pies. Twenty bucks apiece, what do you think? What are the next ones?
Okay, let's pack up the, the apple pies.
Now he's being serious.
Yeah, we got a blueberry pie here. Any bid on that?
Alright. We got a bid for twenty-five over here.
Twenty-five. So we got a bid. Mark Horace, I think.
By the way, folks, while we're doing this, if you wanna go grab a cup of coffee up there, it's right up back there.
Yeah. So I'll get two, that's that apple, what's this one? This is another blueberry pie, two price blueberry pie. Any bid on that? Thirty bucks. Any other bid? No, I, that was, sold to...
Bob Bryant for thirty dollars, thank you, Bob.
Okay. So we've got, uh, a peanut butter pie.
No, you need to hold that up. The only reason I said that is I watched that being built, so...
Okay, so who wants to bid on this blueberry pie, it definitely good. Peanut butter, sorry.
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five. Pay twenty-five dollars, any other bids? Just getting one bid, we'll go with you. John?
John, I just got done asking him what he was gonna bid on, he wouldn't tell me, so...
So we got an apple cranberry pie, combination. Any bids?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay, any more bids?
Somebody take that away from me, I'm weird.
Okay, send it, so twenty, twenty dollars. It's an apple. Let's see. Let's get some of the bread. We've got...
Fifteen cinnamon rolls in that container.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. You're tight. Fine. Five. Twenty-five, Steve. Twenty-five. You got a lot of kids up there. You gotta feed, right? That's right, I got an hour, okay, twenty-five, thirty? Any other bids? Sold the rest of them. Twenty-five, it is. Nine, this is more manageable, so I guess...
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Twenty. Okay, we got a twenty dollar bid for this. Any more, any more bids? Yeah, the rest today, twenty. I'm gonna bid on one of these before it's through, who'd get mine left, so, we got another nine.
Fifteen.
Start again. That is fifteen, any other bids? Twenty, okay. Any other bids? They smell good. No other bids, and twenty dollars for that nine. Then twenty dollars for that nine. So these are East rolls, right? These are, looks like six and twelve? I think my math is right. So twelve East rolls.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Twenty.
Twenty? Any other bids? They're really good. Sold for twenty. Lot for French bread.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Any other bids for the French bread? I gotta ask, so. No other bids? Fifteen.
Uh, by the way, just to let you know, you don't need to have the cash right now, the Couples Club has authorized a hitman, so we can go find. We can go find you with money, if you don't happen to have the cash now, go ahead and bid, and we'll look you up.
And, and that's from the president of Couples Club. Just need to be careful, how you handle as a moderator. Um, this is a peanut butter pie. Right back across. So. I know that because, I mean, it is. You have a bid? Peanut butter pie. Twenty dollars. Twenty? Any more? Twenty-five? Okay. So, Freddie Richard for twenty dollars. Is there another bid?
Wasn't it Don that? Don McDougall was the.
Oh, Don, no, sorry. Don. Can't see you, Don. Okay. This is a Kahlua cake, and I can tell you from past experience, it's a thing to die for. Maybe I'd die for it, but to live anyway. Um, so we got bids for the Kahlua cake. Twenty. Twenty-five. Thirty. Thirty-five. I, I know what it is, it's the Kahlua, it's bringing people in. It's the Kahlua. Yeah. So we're at thirty-five. Alright, thirty-five, any other bids? Alright, we now know who drinks. Hey, we have a cherry pie. Hey, over the bids, cherry pie. I'm gonna ask some bids, nobody likes cherry pie. Fifteen. Fifteen dollars for this, any other bids? No other bids? Fifteen dollars for the cherry pie.
How much did you get for that Kahlua cake, 'cause I gotta answer for that. I have to answer for that Kahlua cake, so.
Two crushed apple pie. Different than the other ones we have down there, another bid, or a bid on this. There's a bid on this pie. Apple pie. Twenty? Any other bids? Okay. So, we've got a blueberry pie here. Two price blueberry pie. Any bids? Just a second, we gotta, I don't wanna go selling pies to the dog, so. This way. Bob Bryant, can you buy a blueberry pie? Then Elmer, get it off the plane. So we better. Yeah, you gotta watch it, you will. We've got some art. Cinnamon rolls. Any bid? Twenty-five dollars, right here. Any other bids? You bid against me, I don't care. Okay, twenty-five, that's fine, thank you. We've got an apple pie here, one of the.
Chicken pie.
With directions on how to do it. How many bids, let's start this one at twenty-five, this is really good. That's what I like, fifty. Any other bids? This chicken pie's gonna fly. Sold. So we had some more East rolls. How many bids, what are we gonna bid for the East rolls?
I'm just saying, whoever want that pie, imagine eating them up to eat with them.
That's good, good, huh? Alright. Yeah, some East rolls, they're really good. Can. Any other bids? Sold, ten. So I've got another apple pie, really nicely decorated top. Not since I've made it tasty enough. This, um, what do I have for this bid? For this pie, excuse me. Somebody give us twenty dollars, twenty-five? Twenty? It's gotta be worth more than that. Anything more? Any other bids? No? Lady right there, go. Yes. A mixed peach pie.
One hundred dollars.
Yeah, we'll start with that. She wants to bidding, that's, bidding, that's okay. Otherwise, sold. We've got two more apple pies here. Anybody want an apple pie? Twenty. Any others? I've got two other apple pies that go for twenty dollars. Uh, your name? Loretta. Loretta? Okay. Thank you. Anybody want apple pies? Again, I got two, just to get rid of it, are you ready? Wanna pay twenty dollars for an apple pie?
How much you got left over that, so?
Oh, we got. Oh no, we got those things.
How many items?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
We have a bid for two hundred dollars for what's left.
What's that? Twenty dollar bid for mine.
Clara.
Clar- Clara? Claire, yeah. Well, I, just, let's just wait a second, I'm gonna sell two things. I, I, I know who made that bid. And I don't know whether she trusted you, you know. Food. I'm gonna, this is a chocolate cream pie. Yes. It's a, a baked press. No, nobody's expecting. Twenty-five. Any bids? Elmer, you got it?
Wait till you get home, Elmer.
Um, and this is a.
We still have the two hundred dollar bid on the floor, if you want, get rid of it all.
Hey, wow. There's a Toho's pie here, everybody, is interested in it?
He is.
That the two hundred dollar bid?
That's the two hundred dollar bid for the rest of them.
I'll give you thirty. Thirty.
Here we go.
Alright, Toho's pie. So it's thirty. Anybody want for the Toho's pie? Thirty-five, sorry. Any other bids? What's it going, what's it at right now?
Forty-five.
Forty. I'll give you a forty. Okay, forty. If I had, he isn't gonna do it. Toho's pie, sold for forty dollars. Sold. Yeah, it was. So we got two. Make sure you put Tom, not Tim, okay? We got two, um. The cinnamon rolls, there's nine each, we got three cinnamon rolls, East rolls, an apple pie, and that's. And two apple pies. Who'll take the bid? What do you give one of those?
Alright, pal.
Hot.
For some reason, he has stuck with his two hundred dollar bid for the rest of them.
Wow. Good job, Chris, thank you.
Jerry, you should've held out, you got robbed, dude, you only got one pie for two hundred.
Thank you for taking the time out of town, needing to do that for the Couples Club, that's very, very much appreciated, and I'm sure whatever scholar gets that scholarship will appreciate it as well, it's great for the scholarship, so. A nice round of applause for my auctioneer. Okay, back to business, Article seventeen. To see what some in the town have voted to raise and or appropriate for the following recreation accounts. ITCC, ten thousand dollars. The library for fifty-four thousand dollars. The pool for twenty thousand dollars, one hundred, excuse me, twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty. For a total of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, and that is recommended. Moved and seconded, Article seventeen, any discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor, please? Opposed. Article seventeen is a pass. Article eighteen, to see what some in the town have voted to raise and or appropriate for the following public service accounts. The request is KD Card, twenty-four hundred fifty-six dollars. MMA, twenty-one, twenty-eight hundred dollars. SEDC, one hundred dollars. Chamber of Commerce, two hundred and fifty dollars. First pie, seventy-three hundred dollars. GMLA for three thousand dollars. The Fly Committee for a thousand dollars. Historical Society, twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And the American Legion for five hundred dollars. The total for Article fifteen, which is recommended, eighteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Moved and seconded, Article eighteen, your discussion. Yes, Steve?
Quick question, uh, I know it's been asked in the past, how many more years have we paid on that first pie?
The first pie, um, we're at a point, Steve, actually, where, where the amount that we have to give every year, we're actually, we're almost even on getting it back. Um, I believe it was a ninety-nine year deal, uh, seems that every time we check it, that seems to be the case, it was a long-term deal. Um, they're having some pretty great success down there at the moment, they're selling more lots than they ever have in the past, and they've got some new businesses coming, so I think it's going to pay off. Uh, it seems like it was not over the last twenty years or so, uh, but there's, there is hope in the future with the project down there, so. Um, if you want the actual specifics, come into the office and we will print off the, the contract, but, uh, I've checked it several times, I just don't remember all the details, and I don't have it here, but happy to share it with anybody.
Any other discussion on Article eighteen? All those in favor? Opposed. Article eighteen is a pass. Article nineteen, to see what some in the town have voted to raise and or appropriate for the following debt service accounts. The request is main bomb bank, salt, and sand shed for fifty-nine hundred and ten dollars, which is recommended. Moved in second at Article nineteen, any discussion here? All those in favor? Opposed. Article nineteen is a pass. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to increase. Would you wanna explain that, Chris, please?
The property tax levy, uh, this Article twenty, uh, comes into play if we end up increasing any of the previous budget items, we didn't change any of the previous budget items, so, uh, this doesn't need to be voted on. So, if you read the ba- bottom here, it says this article only needs to be voted on. So, if you read the bottom here, it says this article only needs to be voted on if the budget is increased more than forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And we haven't changed it, so there's no need to vote on it.
Okay, we're gonna move on to article twenty-one since article twenty was not needed. Article twenty-one states, to see if the town will vote to apply fiscal year two thousand twenty-three slash two thousand twenty-four, operational revenues in the estimated amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which may include revenues from excise tax, tree growth, interest income, building permits, transfer station accounts, to offset the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three slash two thousand twenty-four appropriations. And your selectmen recommend this. Moved and seconded, article twenty-one. Any discussion here? All those in favor? And opposed? Article twenty-one passes. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to allocate the snowmobile registration funds received from the state of Maine to Smokies Angels Snowmobile Club for the maintenance of snowmobile trails for the benefit and use of the public. Moved and seconded, article twenty-three. Any comments?
Article twenty-two.
Oops, article twenty-two, thank you. All those in favor of article twenty-two? Opposed? Article twenty-two passes. Now to article twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to accept, expand, and carry forward in a separate account a sum that may be received from the State Department of Transportation Local Road Assistance Program estimated at twenty thousand dollars, which is recommended by your selectman. Article twenty-three has been moved and seconded. Your discussion? Yes, Dave? Whoop.
I can just shout the question. Is there any money that has been carried forward from previous years?
The question from Dave is, is there any money carried forward from previous years?
Yeah, so if you look at the, uh... If you look at the road plan, you'll see state cap of money, twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars on here. Each year, we're required by law to put this out there. Uh, but I put the state money into the budget, uh, for capital. It's supposed to be used for capital improvements. So if you change culverts, if you add pavement, things of that nature, we spend it. But we, we do have, uh, we take in anywhere from, I'm gonna say eighteen thousand to twenty-two thousand, sometimes twenty-four. Uh, it changes year to year based on what the state allocates us. And we try to put it back into the infrastructure.
Thank you for that explanation. All those in favor of article twenty-three? Opposed, please? Article twenty-three passes. Now moving to article twenty-four. To see if the town will vote to authorize the municipal offices to spend up to sixty-five thousand dollars from the undesigned fund balance for capital improvements on infrastructure projects to include any expenses for road work, to include but not limited to the following: tree trimming and disposal, gravel, stone, cement, hay, filter fabric, labor, machine costs purchased, rented, or hired, pavement, ditching, culverts, bridge work, labor, and supplies, sewer lines, cash basins, and manholes that require maintenance or replacement while improving the roads. This is also recommended by your selectmen. Article twenty-four has been moved and seconded. Do you have any discussion? All those in favor then? Thank you. Those opposed? Article twenty-four also passes. Now moving to article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to transfer an amount not to exceed five percent of the total town budget between budget categories as they deem advisable to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occurred during the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. And this also is recommended. Article twenty-four has been moved. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please? Opposed? Article twenty-five passes. Moving to article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to apply one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the undesigned fund balance to complete the transfer station upgrade. And the estimate project cost is two hundred ninety-three thousand, excuse me, two hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars, using one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three point one nine of ARPA money received, leaving a deficit of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. And is recommended. Article twenty-six has been moved and seconded. Do you have any discussion on this one? Yes, Kathy? Whoop, whoop.
Thank you. What is ARPA, please?
The ARPA money, Kathy, is the money, it's COVID money. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know the actual acronym.
American Recovery Protection Act.
Yeah, American Recovery Protection Act, Mark is saying. Something along those lines. Uh, but it is, it's essentially COVID money. Uh, and there are several parts of money out there. We are looking to use one part that we received at the transfer station. Uh, we are also getting ARPA money that came to us for Commercial Street. That's another one. But it's, it's American recovery and it's all the result of COVID money.
Thank you. Any more discussion on article twenty-six? Yes?
Just have a question. I, I heard you mention the, uh, transfer station. Was, is there any thought given to using some of this money to check for the COVID virus in the wastewater? So the town will have a better handle on how much of the COVID virus is out there? Thank you.
We have not, uh, done anything. We haven't thought about that part at all, to be honest with you. Um, the, the state is working on a program where they did some of that testing. Uh, it's extensive testing. And at this point in time, we're not enrolled in that program. The state is doing some, uh, major work with it. But, uh, we run a treatment plan down here with one staff person that's there every day. And the daily testing that we need to do, we just kind of felt like it was outside of what we'd be able to handle. So, but we have not talked about putting any of this money to that. Uh, we, we really would like to do the project at the transfer station and improve the efficiencies uh, with the hauling costs that we had. That's our real goal, is to boost hauling costs.
Any more discussion here? All those in favor then? Opposed? Thank you. Article twenty-six passes. Article twenty-seven, shall the town of Hartland adopt an ordinance titled Shoreland Zoning Ordinance? Okay, just a little bit of an explanation. Um, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty are part of, uh... We can't do, is there a thirty? Yeah. We can't do anything on here because we need to have the public hearing, which hasn't happened yet. It was about to, but we couldn't use the results of that. So it's moving forward. What I'd like to have is somebody to make a motion to pass over these four articles. Motion moved and seconded to pass forward, pass over twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. Any discussion? Yes, Kathy?
We, uh, there would be an ad come out in the paper on, uh, next Monday. We're gonna do the public hearing on the twenty-second. And at this point, we're planning on doing the, uh, actual town meeting, vote and selectmen's meeting on June fifth. So it'll be the twenty-second. And then June fifth would be the actual town, special town meeting. Just for those of you who did not get to the last public hearing, uh, we did have a public hearing once on this item already. Unfortunately, uh, the Golden Thunder did not run an ad when, they had to run two ads for us. One twelve days prior to the, the meeting, and then one seven days. And they missed both days. And they have written us an apology. Uh, in fact, this time, they, they did, they are running over the ads for free for us, uh, to compensate for that. So, uh, it, it was unfortunate that it happened. But in order for these to be legal and, and, uh, actually matter, we need to make sure that we do the public hearing with proper notice. Six o'clock. It'll be, the, the special, um, will, will probably be at six o'clock as well. Yeah. We'll start, we probably will start the selectmen's meeting at five-thirty like we normally do, and we'll do that at six.
So we have a motion and seconded on the floor to pass over these four articles. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much. Uh, before we close the meeting, I would have, um... Our treasurer, our treasurer. Thank you. Our town clerk, come up and give us the results of the elections.
Thank you for that. So we're gonna give you the results of last night's election. Three-year term for selectmen. Mark Brooks, two hundred and thirty-six votes. Vicki Palmeroy, sixty-nine point votes, with blanks of zero. Three-term year for RSU nineteen director. Vote for one. Robin McNeil, two hundred and sixty-four votes. Ariden, Rebecca Trachten, one vote, and forty blanks. Three-year term for Budget Committee, we vote for three. We have Russell Wilson, Wilson, two hundred and fifty-six. Ariden, Harold Bueker, eleven. Ariden, Barbara Day, one. Ariden, Helen Gallagher, one. Ariden, George Greenwood, two. Ariden, Stacy Helford, one. Ariden, Dale Hubbard, one. Ariden, Jennifer Mayne, two. Ariden, Roderick Pease, one. Ariden, Kenneth White, one. Blanks, six hundred and thirty-eight. Thank you all for your participation in voting.
I just want to say thank you for everybody for coming out today and supporting us again. Uh, we appreciate the support. Uh, if you would hang tight just a minute, once we close the meeting, uh, Stacy Helford would like to speak on behalf of the Historical Society. And, uh, we were going to do that in the beginning and we got sidetracked of that. But she's gonna come and speak a minute. Uh, again, thank you all for coming out today.
Any here a motion to close the meeting? Moved and seconded? All those in favor? Opposed? Stacy, would you like to come on?
Good morning. I also would like to thank you for coming up to town meeting. It's a lot more people than we've seen in the past. Uh, and speaking of having the Historical Society on the board members, and, um, the various different members would like to have more participate from the town. We've been in existence for twenty years. Thank you to the two ladies that started. We've had a newsletter for twenty years. The newest one came out this winter. We'd be happy to send you a copy of it. If you want to leave your email, we're knowing the notebooks out front. Um, we also are trying to gather more membership with an annual membership amount and, uh, participation. We have some lovely things, thanks to Vincent's family. We have the original paperwork from the incorporation of the town. Uh, the town just had turned over to us the initial, uh, range, uh, certification things. We have outside, um, our cookbook. We find it's been on hold for a few years because of the COVID. Uh, we are selling these. Um, this is the first printing of these for twenty dollars. They're out front. And we also have the two-hundred birthday, um, history book, it's a hundred-page history from the full hundred, uh, two-hundred years. And with the photos and other things, that's out front. It has some of the new photos taken by drone. This is the exact photo that was in the nineteen-seventy, um, historical book. This is recreated in twenty-twenty, so we can compare the two. So we would like to invite you to Monday night's meeting here, uh, at six P M. And look forward to serving you all. We will have some more fundraisers later on. And, uh, thank you to the people before me who started the group and those who worked on storing the cemeteries. We have a pretty extensive list of who's buried where in each one of the cemeteries. And the genealogies. We have a state-of-the-art website, thanks to a gentleman out of New York City, whose starting rate is ten thousand dollars to get him to put the first word on the website. And he's done hours for free. So we want to thank Chris for that. Not this Chris, Chris Reed in, uh, New York. So thank you again for supporting the Historical Society. Please stop it out front.
Thank you, everyone. Please make sure you turn the cards back and say, "I'm pleased."